All right, we're going to begin. I want to welcome you and thank you for the LWV of Butte County for participating in this forum. We wish it could be in person, but I think this will get us going to the primaries and we hope to be in person in the fall. I am Carol Burr and I've been a member of the League for a long time and we are one of 700 chapters for a 101-year-old organization and we're pretty proud of that. We're totally nonpartisan. We don't support any parties or candidates, but we do feel that doing voter education and voter engagement is what our reason is for existing. So that's why we're doing what we're doing tonight. The Board of Supervisors is the governing body for the county of Butte. The board exercises legislative, administrative, and appellate powers prescribed to it by the California State Constitution and statutes, the Butte County Charter, and the Butte County Code. The Butte County Board of Supervisors consists of five members, each of whom is elected from the district in which he or she resides. Each board member maintains an office within the district he or she represents. The term of office is four years and the board elects a new chair and vice chair at the first meeting in January of each year. It's a four-year term and the salary, at least the last time I looked, was a little under $63,000 a year. We do appreciate people for running for public office. We know how much time it takes and it's hard to combine that with a full-time job. I'm sure you're all ready for it. We do hope that this will maintain a respectful and civil exchange and not get into anything necessarily unpleasant. What we're going to do is we're going to give you each two minutes for an opening statement and then one minute to answer the questions that we have prepared ahead of time since we're not able to do it live. And so we'll do that and then you'll have two minutes for closing. And the way we've ordered the candidates is just totally arbitrary, but we are going to rotate. So the first person will not always be the first. So the ground rules are that you're not to bring any prepared materials with you. We want you to be able to speak for the moment. And please respect our timekeeper so that we can, everyone can have a good opportunity to speak up. So let's get started. Our first opening statement will be made by Carl Jeffries. Carl? You'll need to unmute yourself, Carl.
Okay. I'm Carl Jeffries. I'm running for Butte County Supervisor, District Two. I'm in the fourth generation, living in Chico, California. I'm actually living in the property that my ancestors had 150 years ago. I went to all the local schools, Shasta and Bidwell Junior High and Pleasant Valley High School. And then I went off to Humboldt State University and got a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology. And I worked for the tribes for a dozen years of the US and I helped them form small governments and larger governments throughout the US, providing them training, support, grant writing, experience, all the things that you would need to develop those governments. Then after a dozen years, I worked for my own company, Mighty Wind Environmental, and I provided trainings to small communities and tribes and federal government and also enjoyed a US EPA grant where I went around and trained underground storage tank inspectors. And throughout the country, I did that. Then I worked for the private sector, for power companies and for the military as a contractor. And my wife, when we were living in Pennsylvania, said that she wanted to move back to her hometown of Chico. So I moved back three and a half years ago and got a job with RCBS, a reloading company in Oroville, California. I always liked working with government and I feel I have a lot to provide, all my skills and experiences in life. I thought that this would be the perfect venue for me to give back to the community that provided me the good education and the good life that I started off with.
Thank you. Peter, you're next.
Well, first of all, thank you to the League for hosting this event. Good evening, I'm Peter Durfee. I'm a former professional baseball umpire, a local police sergeant. I'm a born and raised Butte County resident, but most importantly, I'm a father and a husband. People continue to ask me, "Why are you running? You've been successful, you have a great career." But my answer is pretty simple. It's easy to sit around with your friends and talk about what you would do to make things better. It's easy to talk about what's wrong with our city, our county, our state, even our nation. What's hard is raising your hand and putting your name on a ballot to make a difference. Like everybody here, I care deeply for this community. So I'm running to make a difference in my community. I'm running to help make things easier to get accomplished instead of throwing up roadblocks. I'm running because I want to remind government that they work for the people. It's not the other way around. And I'm running to continue to help make this community thrive. Because if we're not a thriving community, we're a dying one. Our community needs to continue to grow. Smart growth is vital for our success. We need to protect our half a billion dollar agricultural industry, which brings jobs and financial growth to our community. And finally, we need to stand up for law and order, protect our citizens from the people that wish to do them harm. We saw the defund the police movement didn't work, so it's time to change. Butte County can and should be the most dynamic, thriving, safe county in America. That needs to be our focus moving forward and we need to continue to work hard to stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy, you're next.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having us. This is an interesting format to be on a computer screen instead of live and in person, but I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Tammy Ritter. I am the current representative for District Three of Butte County on the Board of Supervisors and I'm running for reelection. I am an East Coast transplant who chose Chico as my home about 24 years ago and deeply, deeply rooted in social services throughout the county, which is what got me interested in politics, was understanding how the roots of our community and how all of the people in our community were impacted and how our governance was able to influence the lives of the folks that live here. So I've served previously on the Chico City Council from 2012 until 2016 and I have a 10-year-old son who was born the same year that I started on council. And I am a foster parent, which is new during the pandemic, a new kind of endeavor for me. And I am just deeply committed to this community and to seeing Butte County recover from the disasters that we've experienced and to ensure that we have very sound fiscal policy in order to provide the kinds of services that the county is responsible for providing. So I look forward to the opportunity to hear the questions and to talk this through with all of my fellow candidates.
Thank you, Tammy. Deborah, you're next.
Good evening. I want to thank the League for sponsoring this forum and I want to thank my opponent for his service to the city of Chico as a sergeant in the Chico PD. I was born in Chico at Inlow Hospital. I was raised for four years here and then in Corning, where my parents, both teachers, got jobs teaching. I went to Chico State and graduated from there, as did my parents. I'm sixth-generation Butte County. Most of my family lived in Oroville, which is pretty much all of their areas. Bidwell Bar, Enterprise, Spring Valley are all underwater. Well, they may not be underwater right now. Some of it is actually showing. I started out my career as a journalist. I worked for a Hispanic lobbyist group in Washington DC, came back from Washington DC here, got married, raised my children here. I have three children and my first grandchild and expecting my second grandchild. Very exciting. I worked for a family business, $5 million family business, a furniture business. I started my own consulting firm about 25 years ago. I've worked in arts and culture and agriculture. For five years, I worked as the CEO and president of the Butte County Economic Development Corporation, where I worked alongside the county. I also worked alongside the county for 14 years in tourism, helping their tourism industry to grow. I wanted to get on the board because I had worked alongside the county and I understood the complexities, the budgeting issues, and some of the social issues that I felt I could bring some light to. So when I had the opportunity, four years ago, two months before the campfire, I put my name on the ballot and it's been a wild ride. It's been a ride of disasters and I'm looking forward to talking about what Butte County has to offer in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. And last but not least, Mary Murphy-Wallworth. Unmute yourself, Mary. There you go.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and for the League of Women's Voters being an amazing forum for letting everybody know the canvases that are here. And thank you for everybody for doing amazing work and public service. I came here as a 15-year-old to Butte County and I didn't realize at the time that my folks had been married up at Ben Chester. And so we had roots here from family members. And when I came, I was in Durham High and then I went to Chico State and I majored in molecular biology and biochem. And I have been fortunate in that I have worked as a teacher and also in the ag department and the public, in actually, public health of Butte County. And I'm very proud to be a wife, a mother, and a grandmother. And I bring to the area sciences and mathematics and an idea of critical thinking. And I was put my hat in the ring because I've never been involved with political life at all. However, people were coming up to me saying, "We don't feel heard." And so that's what I bring to the table. I'm willing to listen and I really think that there needs to be, you know, town hall-type meetings for people to be expressed, able to express themselves to the county and in the supervisors. And that's what I bring to the table. There's many issues and people really, really want to be heard. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, our first question. And these were asked, as I said, from members of the League and the community before the forum today. The question is, what do you see as the most critical need in the county right now? And how would you address it? And Peter, we're going to start with you.
Well, obviously, we have multiple needs. They stem from homelessness, development, public safety. But obviously, near and dear to my heart, public safety is going to be at the top of the list. Because realistically, if you're not safe, nothing else matters. We arguably have the greatest sheriff in the nation. And actually, I'll take arguably out of it. We have the greatest sheriff in the nation and we need to provide him with what he needs to keep our county safe. He needs more deputies. He needs more people and more staff inside the jail facility. Heck, he needs a new jail facility. The fact is, the biggest liability we have in the county is we run a 24/7, 365-day hotel. Yeah, I get it. It's for people that are incarcerated and the people that have done bad things, but they deserve to be taken care of. So obviously, that's going to be close to my heart, near and dear, but we have to continue to take care of our sheriff and give him what he needs to get the job done.
Thank you. Tammy, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, nailing down one specific issue, which is the biggest issue, is actually impossible, right? Because all of the county services are dependent upon funding. And so if we're looking at what is the most critical need of the county, we're looking at our Department of Employment and Social Services. We're looking at the services that are offered to our residents in order for them to be able to eat, in order for them to be able to have a job. All of the Children's Services, our Behavioral Health Department, they're all critical needs that rise to the same level, you know, as us having safe streets and having housing. So yeah, financing is our biggest issue.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, I would say that everything starts with having a house or a roof over your head. Everything else pales when you are out in the streets trying to protect yourself from elements, finding something to eat, going to the bathroom, taking a shower. We lost 17,500 homes since 2018 to fire. We have an incredible housing dilemma. In the last eight years, we built exactly zero, next to nothing, affordable housing. In the next eight years, the city of Chico is scheduled to build 1,000 units by 2023. And the only reason why this is possible is because of the campfire emergency funding. So I believe that if we had housing, if we were able to care for our most vulnerable, then we would be able to take care of some of the other issues that are plaguing our city right now. It starts with a good home and a roof over your head.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest issues that we have is safety. People do not feel safe. And we need to really help our sheriff's departments. And in reality, this also, again, people need to be heard and because people in this county have amazing ideas and I think we need to have a collection of people's ideas to bring them forth so that the board can really look and analyze what the county needs. There's a lot of statements about what they need, but we need that safety and we also have to deal with the homeless situation in a very dignified way. I think there's a lot, there's no silver bullet, but there's a lot of things that need to be pulled together in this and using the different services that the county has in conjunction can really help. And I think that that needs to be looked at very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
I would have to say that the Behavioral Health and Addiction Services of the county would be really important because the homeless problem isn't just people at homes, but a lot of people hurting out there that need help. Every morning when I go to work, I have to clear the homeless out of our parking area and sleeping against our doors and sleeping in our plantings and things and moving them out of the area so workers can come in in the morning. And most of them are very gracious and we have a pretty good relationship, but some of them are psychotic and it feels like we're not helping those people who need the help that they really deserve. We're in a community, you're only as good as the lowest person that we take care of. And I believe that if we took care of a lot of those people and used social services to handle a lot of this, that our jails wouldn't be so full and a lot of the solutions, the simple solutions, might be captured doing that.
Thank you very much. Okay, our second question. What will you do to ensure that the multiple groundwater sustainability plans affecting Butte County will provide current and future residents sufficient access to water? And Tammy, we're going to start with you on this question.
Well, what I'll do is I will continue to ask the questions. I will continue to read the reports and to push that we have some triggers that actually are enforceable related to our groundwater levels. Right now, we have a lot of information. We have a lot of scientific data telling us where specific levels are and where they have historically been, but there is nothing that triggers any type of action. There's nothing that says when we reach a critically low level, this is what will occur. And so I will continue to push for us to have those restrictions put into our SIGMA plan.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, first of all, the Vina sub-basin is 98,000 acre-feet overdrawn. They're only planning for 10,000 acre-feet overdraw each year. So we are way out of balance right now. It's going to be difficult because we are coordinating with basins all around us. The Colusa Basin, just on the other side of the Sacramento River, pumped 95% more than they normally do, almost a million acre-feet. That has a direct effect on our basin. So even if we're doing, even if our farmers are doing everything they can to conserve water, we are still being affected by the basins around us. So one of the single biggest things we can do is understand the science and also get inter-basin agreements in place so that basins outside of ours are not affecting us. We need to protect our domestic well owners. They are the most vulnerable. They can't dig 1,000 feet like farmers can. So we have some issues. They project 5,000 domestic wells will go dry in the Central Valley. That means up here, when we need tanks, it's going to be difficult.
Thank you. Mary?
This is a, here we go again.
Unmute yourself, Mary.
Sorry. There we go. This is a subject that's very important and I believe that the farmers have had, they really need to be involved with this decision-making process. They are the greatest revenue generator of this county and they have done an amazing job. But as they, there is a problem with, again, we need different counties around us and the different water districts to really pull together and work together on this. Because even though our farmers have done, in Butte County, have done an amazing job, they are affected by the surrounding area. And I think that that's why we really do need to work together with the other water districts to really look at this. But I don't think we should penalize our own farmers with this. And we have to deal with the individual people who have wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Well, I think making sure that we get everybody involved, the farmers, the ranchers, the homeowners, the cities, everybody into a stakeholder group to discuss it so that we could have better planning and less people feeling like they're put out of the process. I think if everyone is part of the process, we could all conserve together. And it bothers me, the amount of pumping we're doing, even when it isn't a drought year, we pump. We really need to be able to have a better plan and think ahead on this and bringing all the players in together, I think we would be able to find a better answer. And that's what I have to say to that.
Thank you. And finally, Peter?
Obviously, water is going to be a huge topic moving forward, not only just for the election, but moving forward in our state. Let's not talk about Butte County. The entire states, we're going to be in a water crisis. But I think here in Butte County, we've started going in the right direction. We started that with Tuscan Water District. And by the formation of Tuscan Water District, the men and women that are going to control that, it's a step in the right direction. They're doing a great job. But we got to start looking at this also at the state level. We haven't built a reservoir in the state since 1977. That's absolutely uncalled for. So we need to start thinking about it on a grand scheme, not just Butte County. Let's start thinking about it bigger. We have an entire state here that is going to suffer if we don't do something soon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question. What do you see as the county's role in managing the housing shortage, especially for those who are unhoused? And we'll start this with Deborah.
First of all, the county's role is always to help the ones who are least able to help themselves. And some of our most vulnerable clients are the ones mentioned by Mr. Jeffries, who are the mentally ill who are out on the streets. We do have, I believe, 164 units coming online that will be specifically for behavioral health clients. And many people don't understand how much housing we have out there. I actually posted on my website, it's called a working document, and it's an Excel spreadsheet that is about eight different worksheets talking about all the different housing that we have. We still need more. Even with possibly 2,000 people homeless in Butte County, about 20 to 30 are severely mentally ill and then you have probably another 200 that could be also categorized as needing assistance. So I see that that, again, is something that we need because we can't be looking for these folks on the streets to give them their meds.
Thank you, Deborah. Mary?
Thank you. I think that, again, looking at the housing situation is very, very important. And this vulnerable population that we have has to get connected into the behavioral health because even if you provide housing, you have to get them the help that they need, especially the mental health. And that's why I really believe in connecting different services together with the police, with the social workers, with the healthcare workers. And you have, we're going in the right direction of providing housing, but they can't even ask for it when they're mentally, you know, when they're experiencing mental illness. So we have to plug them in and we have to do it quickly when they need it. So that's where I see that the county is not acting and we need to have that improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Carl?
Maybe an expansion of the CHIPS program. Maybe we can get some funding on that for people building their own homes. Maybe we'll have to look into mother-in-law units that we could put into other people's yards, cohousing, thinking outside the box to get more people housed. You know, that's really what we need to do right now. It's just get as many people in houses as we possibly can. At my current job, I have three people that are living in their cars. They're working people with children and they don't have homes. They didn't do anything wrong other than to have a crisis of paradise and the fire. And that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Carl. Tammy?
The county's responsibility on housing is exactly what the county is doing with the creation of the H Home Department through our Department of Employment Social Services, through our leadership with the Continuum of Care, where we funnel all kinds of state and federal funding, from Emergency Solutions Grant to the cash funding, the Continuum of Care funding, the creation of the homelessness prevention and the rapid rehousing, the permanent housing solutions. The county is participating, not just through Department of Employment Social Services, but through a myriad of programs with behavioral health and that coordinated entry that we're doing through the Continuum of Care, where we're actually managing the information through a homeless management information system that is shared between all of the participating agencies is exactly what we need to be doing to address the housing crisis or at least the homelessness crisis.
Thank you. Peter?
Well, obviously, great question. I deal with this pretty much on a daily basis. You know, I deal with our folks that are homeless. Some, people don't want to believe it, but some choose to be homeless. It's a life choice that they've made. But realistically, how I look at it is, we kind of have a society problem because we've allowed some of this to go on. Mental health, huge problem in Butte County. I deal with these people all the time, whether it be drug-induced, whether it be psychosis. These folks need our help. We have a group at the Chico Police Department that works with our mentally ill. We need to have more of those people on the street at night. Right now, we don't have anybody at 2:00 in the morning. So what am I supposed to do with somebody that's mentally ill that needs a home at 2:00 AM? There's nowhere for me to take them currently. The county stepped up, did a great job, helped with the Palace Shelter with the city of Chico. That's outstanding. We opened it on Monday and people are starting to get home somewhere to live. But there's got to be rules, there's got to be accountability behind it. So we're moving in the right direction. I think the county is doing a good job overall when it comes to finally stepping up and helping the city. We have those [inaudible 00:08:29]. Uh, we have those conversations between the county and the cities, uh, that are finally starting to happen. They haven't happened for years. So those are happening now. We just have to build on that. We have to take and we have to continue what we've started. And I think with the Palace Shelter, that's where we're at.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, the next question. We're asking you big questions here.
Um, can I just ask a question? Will there ever be rebuttal?
We don't have it arranged for a rebuttal. We're just, um, it's going to be your, you're directly speaking to the voters and, and they're going to have to, I think, distinguish between what you're saying rather than talking to each other. But it's a good question. It is another format we could have used, I suppose.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, what is your position on the formation of an independent redistricting committee? We've all been discussed through the redistricting. Mary, we'll start with you.
Um, I think an independent, uh, redistricting, uh, formation is a good idea. Uh, there seems to have been a lot of dissension and, um, frustration over the, the, you know, the district, redistricting process. And in fact, I know that, that the county has tried to put out, um, ways that people even know what their district is. And, uh, people are still struggling with that. And, um, so I, I think that there needs to be more thought in this and collaboration. But, um, I think an independent redistricting idea is, is important.
All right, well, thank you. Um, Carl?
I could go along with that. I think that redistricting in an independent group would be the best way to go. Uh, even, even with the best intentions, sometimes it looks like, uh, the map is gerrymandered, which I don't really believe it was, but you want to make sure that the voter feels like the map isn't being manipulated to hurt one group over another. And that's pretty much what I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Uh, Peter?
Well, it's kind of an open-ended question. I mean, it depends who's in charge of it, who places the people on that independent commission. Who's, uh, you know, it could go either way. So, I mean, we could call it independent all we want, but how is it formed? So unless there was more information provided, it's unknown. Uh, it may work, it may not work. Uh, but just the question in itself, there's not enough info to actually provide maybe what they're looking for in the question.
Okay, all right. Uh, Tammy?
The Board of Supervisors has a fiduciary responsibility to all of the residents that we serve. And when we are spending taxpayer dollars to hire consultants to draw maps only to not consider those maps, I am one hundred percent fully supportive of an, of an independent commission. We owe that to the people who live in Butte County, that their hard-earned dollars are not thrown away and wasted. And we owe it to them that the individuals drawing the maps should be neutral and they should not have any political agenda.
Thank you. Um, Deborah?
Well, I would echo what Tammy said, having gone through the process. Uh, there were, if it's going to be democratic, there were nine hundred and seventy-three letters in support of the maps that the consultant drew in the first place. There were seventy-three letters of support for the map that was adopted, drawn by a fellow supervisor. That's not how it should work. And that's because, that's why myself and Supervisor Ritter suggested an independent commission. There are examples all over the United States, and in this state, twenty-two or twenty-three counties had independent commissions. There were only about three or four counties, um, who are being took, taken to task on gerrymandering that occurred. One is Merced, one is Butte, and one is San Luis Obispo. I know for a fact those three counties, uh, took this, uh, seriously and took the issue to the Attorney General. So yes, I believe we need an independent redistricting commission.
Thank you very much. Um, what do you think the Board of Supervisors can do to increase collaboration with Butte County's towns and cities, and in what areas of service? Um, and Carl, we're going to start with you.
Well, I've worked with, uh, towns and cities and counties, uh, throughout the country. And usually it's topic-oriented, and if you can get people together in groups, stakeholder groups, and talk through the issues, the local issues, and hear the voters and hear the property owners and understand where they're coming from, and then to, uh, make your decisions in that direction, I think that always works out well, no matter if it's water or if it's, uh, homeless or how the, the county's going to use money on firefighting. It's all a great way to, to do it, and that way you actually have eyes on the ground and understanding. And I ended up learning more from the stakeholders than I had in my position. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. Peter?
Well, I think it starts with communication and relationships. Um, I think the county needs to do a, a better job of building relationships within people at the city level to include city council members, um, and the people that work at the, in the communities that they, uh, they serve. So it starts with that. We got, we got to keep talking about these things. We have to, uh, build those relationships. And ultimately, I think by doing so, mental health is going to come to the forefront. Um, I think, you know, Butte County behavioral health, I mean, it's in the title, Butte County, they need to, uh, do a better job of working with our cities and working with our local communities to help these folks that are suffering from mental health. Um, I don't think we're doing a good job of it as of right now. And, um, I think that's a, a step that we need to go to, uh, in the right direction.
Thank you. Tammy?
I think there's a lot of opportunity that we have to work with our local jurisdictions. Some of the things that have come up over the, the last year has been some of the, um, the ARPA funding that has been awarded to the county and that the county has then, um, distributed throughout, um, all of the different communities. But there's other things, like our Butte Energy Authority is one area where we could, um, have more collaboration and there could be, uh, mutual benefit involved. We could look at a local bank, um, that would address all of our local needs. And we, we could launch emergency preparedness, uh, programs that would target specific areas and specific, um, disasters. And I think that, um, I think that we have a lot of opportunity and I think that there's already a lot of collaboration that's going on.
Thank you. Deborah?
Uh, well, first I want to say that we are working together. Um, there is what is called the Local Government Committee, which meets quarterly. And that is, um, the, uh, city council and, um, to the two Chico representatives, what used to be known as the Chico Representatives. Now we have four after the new maps, but it used to be two. So, um, what we talk about there is homelessness. Um, when we started this committee, it was over the nitrate issues that were in North Chico. Those were being solved. We had twenty islands of county within the City of Chico. Now there are none. We talk about housing. We talk about social services. We talk about how our firefighting services can coexist, the, the, um, city firefighting services and the county. They work together to respond to fires all over the place. Um, and BCEA is a good example. That's an Butte Choice Energy Authority. I think that has great promise for the future, particularly with the rates that we're looking at PG&E, um, having in the next two years.
Thank you. Mary?
I think that, you know, having the collaboration between the county and the cities is very, very important and I'm glad that it's happening. But what's being left out is, again, like hosting forums that the actual citizens who are affected by this feel that they can come to and voice their concerns. And that's what I'm hearing over and over again, is that, you know, even in the, uh, the going-to-county, um, uh, the supervisor meetings, you know, something like a timed, uh, a ti- a specific time for people to voice their opinions about things. And the fact that it's during the day, so many people who are working cannot, they don't, they don't feel heard and they don't feel like there's a forum for hearing it. So yes, I think, and I think we should continue to have the county and the city work together, especially with the homeless and the safety issue. It's very, very paramount. So that's what I think. We just need to get the people involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Um, local officials, um, are elected in nonpartisan races. But increasingly, political action groups are using partisan language and strategy. How are you and how will you work against polarization and for consensus building? Uh, and we'll begin with Peter.
So you broke up a little bit when you were...
Oh, do you want me to read it again?
Please, if you don't mind.
Yeah, it's a longer question. Our local officials are elected in nonpartisan races. But increasingly, political action commit, groups are using partisan language and strategies. How are you and how will you work against polarization and for consensus building?
Well, obviously, we can't control what other people do. Um, that's the reason I do the job that I do. Uh, so I can't control what's going on outside of politi-, you know, other political action committees or other groups that are either for or against myself or anybody else that's, that's sitting here. Um, you know, so far, I think that our government, um, as a whole, we're doing a good job. And I don't see a lot of change that needs to take place moving forward. So, that's it.
All right, thank you. Um, Tammy?
Uh, well, I, I agree. There's huge polarization and, um, and there's huge issues, um, that I think have become much more exacerbated, um, over the last couple of years. And where information that is blatantly false is, is put forward as true. Um, so my commitment is that, um, I will not run a campaign like that and I will not serve like that. I will, um, I'm committed to the truth and I'm committed to making sure that the, uh, information that is distributed and disseminated is, um, is what is actually happening and is not based on impressions or based on one person's experience, um, but is actually, um, based on, on, on what is occurring in our county.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, I agree that, I mean, you, you know, if you're on Facebook, if you're watching the news, um, a good example is defund the police. That's the most ridiculous statement that could ever be made. That's not what we need. What we do need is more truthful statements that we need to work cooperatively. We need to stop with that type of language, inflammatory language, because it's not helpful. So I can also make a commitment that, you know, I don't want to run that kind of campaign. If I can't stand up on my own record and what I will do in office, then I shouldn't probably be running for office. I need to be able to put forth my vision, not talk about my opponent's vision or flaws or whatever else may occur. I think it's important to, um, tell the truth and to be truthful about things and, um, point out, um, uh, items that could be detrimental to service.
Thank you, Deborah. Um, Mary?
I think it's very important, uh, first of all, I don't have any political action committees or anything like that. And, um, I'm a nonpartisan and I, basically, what I'm doing is listening to people. And I'm very honest. I'm very data, data-driven. Uh, I don't like to make decisions unless I've got, uh, the data right in front of me, and I'm very particular about that. And honesty is huge. Transparency is huge. So I have never been a part of a PAC or anything like that, and I don't plan to be. And, um, I do believe somebody in service is a public servant and needs to be open and willing to listen to all sides. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Carl?
Well said, Mary. Uh, I focus on people, not on politics. And I try to use common sense solutions. And I think that if you're not listening to the people, then you're listening to those people that we shouldn't be. And with such a small community, we should be above board and we should know where all the money's coming from. I don't really believe that the people that we are in this race, those type of people. I think that we all care about this community and care about the community and the county.
Thank you. Okay, um, this is a question that I thought was interesting. Uh, communication has proven to be inadequate for many residents of Butte County. How would you improve cell services, especially in less populated areas? Uh, and we'll begin with, um, Tammy?
We're going to get to start a lot. Uh, yeah, this has been a huge issue and serving two of our, um, previously serving two of our mountain communities of Cohasset Forest Ranch and Part of Butte Meadows, um, this was a really big issue. You know, there's, there's a lot more, um, that's gone in just with Starlink over the last year. But, um, in terms of emergency response, which I feel is really the critical reason why we need to ensure that there is, um, broadband throughout our county. Um, we have looked at the, at the county. We've purchased what's called Alert FM, um, which is a radio-based, uh, emergency alert system. Um, so that people, even if they don't have connectivity, um, at the very least, can you get an evacuation notice or can know, um, kind of what, what emergency situation is taking place in the county? And so I have been committed to that and supportive of that and, um, pushing for that, uh, since I got on the board.
Thank you. Deborah?
Uh, well, I was going to bring up the FM alert. Uh, the truth is that broadband is an issue in, in every rural area of the country and particularly in Northern California. It's very expensive and when we have, um, privately-owned utilities like Comcast and AT&amp;T and some of these, um, huge companies that don't see the profit margin in finishing that last mile to a rural area that has only ten people in it, we have issues. So the new infrastructure package coming down from the federal government is to try to finish that last mile and the middle mile to get broadband here. Today, there was a meeting on that very topic, but it is a focus in the legislature. It is a focus of our county. It's on our legislative platform. And we really, in this day and age, can't be without it for safety reasons and also for education. We learned that kids were having to go to Taco Bell. We saw that on television, if you, if you'll remember. We have that happening here in Butte County and we can't have that. So, um, it's very important and it's vital for the future.
Thank you. Mary?
I think being able to communicate is, is paramount. And, uh, again, what we have to do it in a way that we really look at the science. Um, we have to be careful. Again, the kids have to be able to connect. Hopefully, they won't need to as much because they'll be back in schools again. But there are, you know, always, um, educational, um, requirements from home, uh, to do studies. But we really need to be careful about how this is played out and look at, uh, positives and negatives, and there's lots of different ways to do it. So just saying, oh, this, there's only one way, I think, is not the way to go. We really need to look at this and analyze it for the health of the kids and for the people in the areas that are in rural. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Carl?
For, uh, public safety and for the education of the children, we do need to get connectivity to all the people in those areas. But we do need to sit down with all the players, with the providers, and find out the best for each area. Uh, there isn't any one-size-fits-all, but I'm sure we'll find out soon. That's all I have to say.
All right, um, oh, I'm sorry. Peter, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm getting cross-eyed over here. Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, that's why Clara is here to slap my hand. Okay.
No problem. So, I mean, obviously, I think this is a no-brainer for everybody in front of you. None of us are going to disagree with this. We absolutely have to have communication to our, the rural part of our counties. Um, unfortunately, some- Unfortunately, sometimes we come up with, you know, whether it be a cell tower, you know, we get the not in my backyard, you're right. I live in the, I live in a rural district and I don't want, I don't want a cell tower in my backyard. So is there another way? Obviously, the Board of Supervisors has been working on another direction. It's great. Again, you're not going to see anybody on here that's going to disagree with the fact that we have to have communication to the rural part of our county.
Thank you. All right. So you now each have two minutes for a closing statement. And again, you're going to, yes? Oh, good, okay. I thought you were slapping my hand again. All right. So two minutes for a closing statement, and Mary, you're going to go first.
Thank you. Basically, I thank you for having this forum and what each of you bring to the table. And I just want to reiterate that I really believe very, very strongly in the need for wraparound services for looking at the homeless situation. I really need, I really believe that when we, you know, and you guys have stated it as far as we need the mental health clinicians, we really need to have the healthcare people involved. We need to have extra training and personnel for the police and the peace officers and the Sheriff's Department to work in collaboration, to really look at the solving the issue of individual people really hurting and who have mental health issues and substance abuse issues. We need to get them into areas of help immediately and not wait. I think I have a collaborative technique and willing to listen to people. And also just an incredible appreciation for our area. Agriculture in this area is so paramount. It is, again, the largest revenue source, and they do take amazing care of the water because it is in their, their purview to be able to do it. And I really think that the county really can help in that. But also the housing situation, we need to look at things like CEQA. And when we talk about trying to get housing available to people who don't have it, we need to help, we already have areas in, that are designated for development. We need to get that going in a faster manner. And I'm willing to help, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank the League for the forum and thank my opponents for joining in tonight. It's good to get to know you a bit better. One of the things that I would like to see is a professionalization of the supervisors' role. Currently, in our role as supervisors, I think this has been seen for many, many years as a part-time job. And that really stopped, really after the spillway crisis. We have now been in years of crisis. And I know that if it weren't for my role on CSAC, which is the California State Association of Counties and NACO, the National Association of Counties, and as my role as the Chair of the Resilient Counties Advisory Board for NACO, it, I wouldn't be able to bring back some of the opportunities that we've been able to take advantage of in the county. It's important for us to have our own departments. We don't even have our own departments. So I don't oversee my own employee, my own executive assistant. We're overseeing a $650 million budget at, you know, for the entire county, yet we don't have our individual department budgets. I think that's important. I think it's important to separate those five departments, each to each of the supervisors. I think that the other thing that many people have mentioned here tonight is that we, we face the mental health issues that plague our county. You'll have to remember, though, that the governor is suggesting Care Court, which takes us a step closer to deal with some of the issues that we can't deal with right now. We can't just go and arrest people because they are mentally ill. There is, there are protocols. So there are things on the horizon that I think are going to be coming together to make these issues less stressful. And the county will be a key partner in all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, let's see who's next. Tammy?
Thanks, Carol, and thanks to the League for putting this on. It's quite an interesting format. I love it. And I want to talk just about behavioral health. When I served as a city councillor, I did not have a very good grasp of the county services and how the county services operated. You know, in my social work prior to working with the Torres Shelter and working with Catalyst and a number of local organizations, I saw the need from the client side. I, I wasn't, I was working at it as, as an administrator, but I was seeing the client need. After being at the county for over three years, I have a much better understanding of the limitations of what the county can and cannot do. And I think that if there's anything that we need to do, it's that we need to educate the public better. Butte County Behavioral Health serves those with severe and pervasive behavioral health issues. And so that doesn't mean that every single person who's walking down the street or every single person who is without a home, or even every single person who might need some assistance with their behavioral health gets that help from the county. And I think that it's been a very easy kind of catchall to say, oh, well, this is a behavioral health problem and the county's not doing their job. And the reality is, is that the county is doing a fantastic job. And our behavioral health department, I give a big kudos to for all of the work they do in housing people and getting folks connected with the services they need. I would love to see more, more focus put on substance use disorders and on a more regionalized approach with our neighbors to the north. So. Thank you.
Peter?
Again, thank you for hosting us tonight. But really, what it comes down to is the, the solutions to our challenges, they're not going to come from just straight government. They got to come from the creativity of our community members and the businesses that create jobs that we desperately need in Butte County. We need to get people back to work. I bring with me a lifetime of knowledge about this community, a community that I've served over the last decade as a law enforcement officer. Having an active duty police officer, let alone a police sergeant, someone in a role of leadership, sitting on the Board of Supervisors, it's unprecedented. There's no one else that's more in touch with the community members of somebody that does my job. My office is the community. My desk, it's a black and white police car that I get in every day and go to work. I see the good in our community. I see the bad in our community. Who else better to serve and represent the people of this community than somebody that's already doing it? From what you've heard tonight, there's just some of the reasons that I'm supported by multiple groups like Cal Fire, Butte County Farm Bureau, many elected politicians, police chiefs, retired former police, fire chiefs, and multiple associations throughout the county. Ultimately, when it comes down to one thing, I promise you that if you give me your vote of confidence on Election Day, I'm going to work hard to represent your families with honor and respect. I'm Peter Durfee, and I want to be your first choice for District Two for the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. There. Oh, I didn't do Carl? You know, you can tell I'm feeling over. Carl, would you come up for us here, please?
Quality of life is why we all want to be in Butte County and why we like the areas that we live in. I was a remote worker, working as much as 75% of my time out on the road. But Chico is one of those places that is hard to get to. There's no airline there. There's no four lane highway connecting us to the other next big city, unlike Redding that has all those services. Those things would be great to develop economic development in our area. Over the last 20 years, I think we've, we've kind of been on a downturn. We've had a lot of disasters, but also I think that new blood and new ideas would help with the future of Butte County. And so that's why I'm putting my hat in the ring. I think that I have a lot of good common sense solutions and I work well with people. And that's why I'd like you to vote for me and you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, on behalf of the League, I want to thank you all. We appreciate your running for office. We appreciate your civil exchange of ideas here tonight. We will, are recording it, and it will be available on our YouTube site, our, our Facebook page. And also you can get the link at our website, LWV Butte County. So we're hoping that other people will come and hear your well-thought-out positions on things. We, we do want people to use the voters' edge, and I'm hoping the candidates complete their, their profile there and that voters go. It's a wonderful way to find out about all of the people running in the state of California. And also, we want to remind you that June 7th is when all of this comes to a conclusion, and we want everyone to get out there and vote. And when you're participating in forums like this, you're going to be an educated voter, and you'll know why you're voting the way you are. So again, we do thank you and wish you all the best and continue caring for our county.